Welcome to the City Council's special meeting this Monday evening, March 6th. I now call this meeting to order. Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Hedges. Councilmember Lorraine.
Here.
Councilmember Newsom.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here. We're excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow request-to-speak slip and hand it to the deputy clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise-your-hand feature in Zoom and you'll be called upon at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain open and available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. We will begin with one item on the agenda, which will be a study session. And it is a closed session? No, it's not. Okay, typo. It is not a closed session, it is an open session, hence that's why we're all here. And we'll get a presentation from our Finance Director, Rich Lee, on investment policy, environmental, social, and governance considerations.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and members of the council. Rich Lee, the city's Finance Director. Let me give a brief introduction for this item for you. So, one of the initiatives for the current fiscal year is to study the impact of a potential ESG, or environmental, social, and governance factors into the city's investment policy. This was presented to the Investment Advisory Committee in July of 2022. And I'd like to introduce Carlos Obletas from Chandler Asset Management, who's going to be giving the council some information to make some educated decisions and help bring direction to staff on whether it wants to move forward with either an ESG or potentially SRI, socially responsible investing, and incorporate that into the city's investment policy. So with that, we're going to start with our presentation.
Madam Mayor and esteemed councilmembers, thank you very much for inviting me here tonight. My name is Carlos Obletas, I'm a Senior Portfolio Strategist with Chandler Asset Management. We're your investment advisor. I'm part of the team, the investment team, that makes the decisions on how we position our portfolios, and I primarily work on the city's investment portfolio. My purpose tonight is to give you a brief description of how the investment program works, because I think it's important to have that background and understanding. I was asked to give a discussion on how socially responsible investing and environmental, social, and governance factors come into an investment program. And then, of course, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. It's your meeting, so please do not hesitate to ask any questions. Before I hit the slides, I want to just take a step back and take a 40,000-foot view of the investment program. I want to remind everybody that the city's investments are governed by California Government Code. If you're looking for a reference, it's generally 53600 is the section and the related paragraphs. 53601 is the section of California Government Code that gives a comprehensive list of the investments types that you're allowed to purchase. Investing for California local governments is severely restricted. A lot of the rules that came about around investing for local governments in California came about after the early mid-'90s, when Orange County had its problems with its Treasury. But generally speaking, California Government Code limits the city to invest in bond investments, which are debt instruments. You're effectively a lender. When you purchase a bond from an issuer, you're lending that issuer that money, and you're collecting rent on that money or interest. The value of the investment also can go up and down, and the city currently takes a strategy that tries to protect that fair value, but enhance the interest income at all times. And that's generally the strategy. It is actively managed. We mainly hold the maturity, but there are times when we may have a sale before maturity to reposition the portfolio to capture higher yield, to improve credit quality, to increase the diversification, many reasons. Here's the important part. The investments are governed by code, and code lists out the goals that you are supposed to have in the policy. They are, in order, safety first, followed by liquidity, meaning you have to have the money available when you need it. And thirdly, after those two goals are met, thirdly, then you look for return, and it's in that order on purpose. Code does another thing. Code actually places a fiduciary duty on everybody involved in the investment process, and that includes policymakers such as the City Council. And it holds you to a standard to meet those goals. That may have an interplay with the discussion that we have here today. A lot of open interpretation, but I want you to understand that duty that California Government Code places on you. You're going to hear terms thrown around a lot by the industry today. You'll hear terms like SRI, socially responsible investing, or ESG, environmental, social, and governance investing, or environmental and social and governance factors to investing. And they're oftentimes confused. Here's what I want to let you know. With this field, inasmuch as it impacts investments, this is still in the Wild West stage. That's the best way that I can describe it. The way that these terms are being defined are evolving, and not everybody uses the same terminology. And the way that people, the way that they step forward into an SRI program, or an ESG program, or some sort of investment program that factors in socially responsible investing, that is evolving. But I will tell you that that is still the Wild West. I'll give you some examples of that. Generally speaking, though, we're finding that the camps are moving into two different directions. And generally speaking, SRI is generally values-aligned investing. What it means is, you think of the city and the city's values, and you look for investments that maybe don't meet those values, and you make a policy statement that you're going to avoid those investments. So generally, it's an exclusionary process. When you hear the term SRI, people are moving more towards using that to define an exclusionary process, where you simply say, "We have a pool of investments, and we have some values to uphold those values. We're going to avoid issuers that do these things." And these things is your list. And simply, you avoid those names in the process. ESG is a little bit different. Most people are today using that term to refer to inclusive processes. So it's a process where you are seeking out specific investments that exemplify some value. Sometimes those are called key performance indicators, KPIs. It's just a term for the industry. But basically, you're looking for investments that perhaps uphold, or demonstrate, or manifest the values that you have. But it's generally an inclusive process. The whole idea is to, hopefully, is to mitigate risks through some ESG investing by applying some filters there, but it's still imperfect, as you'll see going forward. Here's some considerations that a lot of investors, institutional investors, retail investors, and local government investors think about when they think about ESG and SRI. I think probably one of the biggest ones you'll see there, that is a common theme, certainly in Northern California, is something having to do with climate change. That's a common one that you see. You may see some about treating people with equity. That's another common one that you might see. But there are various ones that you can see, and I'll let you look at these on your own. These are some of the more common ones that you see under the environmental, social issues and governance issues listed there by each column. So, how does this work? How do we do this? Well, with the SRI approach, it's simple. It started back in the days of, if you remember, the early '80s, a lot of investors in institutional investment pools and pension funds basically said, "You know, we don't want to support apartheid." That was the big theme back then. So they simply said, "We're not going to invest in any securities that are issued by South African companies, because we don't want to be supportive of apartheid." So they excluded certain issuers which had a problem with a particular theme that they had. So it's an exclusionary screen. Oftentimes, we'll run across an investor that says, "You know, we don't want any fossil fuels in the portfolio. We just, we want to sort of, we want to address, or we want to recognize parts of our constituency that decided they really feel that this is not, should not be part of our mission. We're just going to exclude them." And generally, it's very simple. We have a list of exclusions, where we might not buy issuers, bonds from issuers like Chevron and Exxon, which are eligible to purchase in your investment program. It's very simple, it's easy, and it's easy to manage. ESG, the inclusive screen, is a little bit different. The way that that is mostly being implemented today is, you have to have some sort of rating system by which you are gauging every issuer of the bonds that you are able to purchase, and you are trying to score them based on how well they meet that criteria, similar to the way that a credit rating agency might give a credit rating to an issuer to understand their ability to make debt service and pay you your principal back and make interest payments. So, that's a little bit tougher to do, because criteria vary from city to city, and I can guarantee that your neighbors have different criteria than you do. And big institutional investors across the country, and other cities across the state, have different criteria than you. And that's where we really run in the problems. But let's talk a little bit more about that. With the ESG strategies, usually, those inclusionary rating systems will focus on one of two things. One of them will be on impact investing, where they take a theme or an idea, and they want to make an impact on society or an impact on a community, and they will select investments that are doing something to further that along. So they're specifically looking to impact a certain sector of society with the way that they choose their investments. With thematic, it's more on where you're looking at the prior indicators that we looked at, those three columns, and they're looking at every single, I'll just back up so we can look at these once more. They're looking at perhaps a list of some of these, how they engage with their employees, how they treat their general community. Do they have a reputation for bribing officials in foreign countries? How do they compensate their executives? Is it fair? Are they polluting the planet? Those are the kind of things that they ask. And then somehow, somewhere, you're scoring them based on some of those factors, or factors of your own, to then figure out whether they meet the minimum requirement to enter your portfolio or not. You can see where I'm going with all of this. The problem with all of this is that, well, if you look at this list, just the fourth bullet down, and you see some subbullets, those are providers, current providers today in the investment space, that will do exactly that, that will put together a rating system similar to what Standard &amp; Poor's does, or Moody's and Fitch do for bonds and issuers. Similar to that, they will put a rating system on ESG factors for different issuers. The problem with that is that if I go to the one at the bottom of the list, Sustainalytics, Sustainalytics hates one name. For example, Fifth Third Bank. They might rate them very, very low, because by their metric, Fifth Third Bank in the Midwest doesn't do well with the environment, or they might fund a pipeline, or they might do something that they didn't like. But if I go to someone like MSCI, MSCI loves them, because they look at other factors which fit their list, and they're a good corporate player, and they do well for the environment, and they treat their employees equitably. And now you see the problem. The problem is that this is the Wild West, and it's very difficult to put some sort of definition around all of this. And at the end of the day, the only, really, the only effective way to do that today is to use a service like Bloomberg's, or CDP, or Credit Insights, or MSCI, and in some instances, pay them. These are four pay services to basically give a score that may or may not match with the City of San Mateo's directives, values, and initiatives. So that's where we run into problems. So by far, the easiest and most effective way to implement any sort of socially responsible investing is for policymakers such as yourself to determine what values you want to uphold for the community, and then basically filter out anybody that doesn't meet it. That's generally what we've seen. These are my observations. Just so you're aware, as your investment advisor and manager, we're looking at investments from a different, a number of different factors in order to determine whether it's appropriate to have the investment in the city's portfolio. That's going to be the diversification of their revenue streams, their liquidity ratios, how much days' cash on hand they have, just various metrics that allow us to understand how they're able to pay you back, and how they're going to grow, and if they're a strong company, and if they're a leader in their industry group, and so forth. So, as part of that process, we have an ESG filter, where we look at key performance indicators, but not so much to push through an impact or to address a theme. It's more to see where there is a risk, a risk that might prevent that issuer. If they're taking on something in the markets that's hurting them financially, that's going to impact their ability to pay you back. I'll give you a perfect example on this, and this is the one that's been in the news. Unilever is, you're not allowed to buy Unilever. They're not a U.S. company. They don't fit the rules under California Code. But as an example, Unilever is a major global conglomerate. They are owners of Ben &amp; Jerry's Ice Cream. You're probably aware that about a year or two ago, Ben &amp; Jerry's said, "We don't like what Israel's doing in the West Bank, so we're pulling out." That made some very negative headlines. It was in a period of time when Ben &amp; Jerry's seemed in the news to be pushing an anti-Semitic theme, and there's, I'm not trying to make a judgment on Ben &amp; Jerry's, I'm just saying what occurred in the markets. So, that's something that impacted, started impacting Unilever, and Unilever had to move in, their board had to move in and actually take actions. We look for things like that, inasmuch as it might impact the bottom line, the financial bottom line of that issuer, so that it doesn't present an additional financial risk to you, the investor. So there is a filter that we're already looking at, just on the financial level, to see if any activity that they're doing might impact their ability to pay you back. We do look at a number of things, I think I've mentioned some of these already. The list that we have is very limited, because if you think about the investment world, like the things that CalPERS invests in, such as stocks and bonds, and private equity, and real estate, and hedge funds, and so forth, you're not allowed to do any of that with your operating funds and your bond proceeds. In fact, you're only allowed to buy bonds. And within the bond world, you really can't go beyond five years, generally speaking. So you're limited in maturity. And in credit quality, you're only allowed to buy credits as low as single A, which is still a notch above the lowest bottom rating of the investment-grade world, which are considered high credit quality. So you're very, very limited. And even within that world, the asset classes you're allowed to purchase are listed in code, and again, they're very limited. And those are even limited by concentration. A lot of them, there are concentration limits imposed by code. So the list is very, very limited to begin with. So it's always a little bit of a difficulty to diversify a portfolio. But we look at some of the things that are listed here, a credit analysis, which includes balance sheets, profit-loss statements, cash flows and ratios, a story behind the issuer to understand how they make their money, and some issues from the same issuer, some, one bond deal will differ from the next, from the exact same bond deal with the same credit quality. They may have different liquidity characteristics, so we look for things like that. But at the end of the day, you know, it would be yet another filter that we would have to add to the process, of a process that's already limiting you significantly in the investment world. So how do you do it? If you do want to go down that route, how do we do that? Well, usually, you want to ask questions as policymakers, such as, "Well, what areas do we want to have an impact in? What do we care about? Are we in agreement as to what those values are? Is it really apparent in the community where we hear from our constituents that we need to introduce something like this? And if so, what values will we target?" Because every city's values are different. And are those values weighted higher than the returns? If that's the case, you may have a fiduciary problem because of the fiduciary duty that California Code places upon you to meet first safety before return, before values, before anything else. First safety, then liquidity, then return. And then, after those three are met, then you can think about things like this. And it's a question. Can we do both at the same time? In some instances, you may, and in many, you may not. So these are some of the questions that you may ask. And however it's done, the process that we've seen, and I've been doing this for 28 years, so my observation has been, that the process that we see that works is that we get a policy statement from policymakers, and it's a statement that states what the value is. And then, you're relying upon your staff, your city manager's team, your Finance Director, to then implement what that's going to look like when the rubber meets the road, for lack of a better term. So for example, you might say something like, "Well, we're going to avoid fossil fuels." So what's the criteria for avoiding it? Typically, staff will come up with a criteria, and an exclusionary list, and a process where they manage that, and that's typically the best way that it's done. The key things are this. The directive has to be implementable. It cannot be nebulous, because it's then very hard to follow. Staff has a hard time following it. And then the actions that they take, someone has to be able to look back and identify it as being in compliance with the policy, with the City Council's policy. Those are the best ways that we've done it. The language itself, and the policy, generally, we look for language that is strong enough to not be open to interpretation, but also flexible enough to make sure that the city's staff is able to fulfill the city's fiduciary duty of safeguarding the public trust and the public funds. Usually, we like policy-level language in the policy. The implementation would be something like an exclusionary list that's managed by the staff. So again, complying with the fiduciary duty, we have governing laws that limit what we do. When we began working with the city, we worked hand-in-hand with city staff to update the city's investment policy. That policy is actually more restrictive than California Government Code, because it includes best practices that aren't even addressed in code, but which are considered good safeguards for the city's funds. So there's that filter that we have to worry about. There's additional risk tolerances. We don't do everything that California Government Code allows us to do, because it may not be a good fit for what the city's goals may be. And then, of course, there's the market risks that we have, and the filters that we deal with, credit analysis that we have to worry about. And then on top of that, we are in constant discussion with city staff about cash flows and cash needs, making sure that maturities are aligned with the city's cash needs. When there's a CalPERS payment coming due sometime in July, we have to make sure that there's money available to be able to provide for that. So there's a lot of work going on in all of this, in a very restrictive environment. The question to you as policymakers is, if this is the time to implement socially responsible investing, or ESG, you know, we want to make sure that it complies with the primary goals of the city's investment program, that it continues to allow the city to meet its goals of safety and liquidity, and we want to think about how that might impact the city's investments going into the future. Let me stop there. That's a mouthful, but perhaps you have some questions for us?
Madam Mayor, if I may. The principal question before staff was, what is the financial impact if the city were to implement either ESG or SRI factors into the investment policy? Attachment one to the AR is the portfolio characteristics. Now, when I look at what holdings are in the city's investment portfolio, anything, let's say, as an example, the council were to say, "We don't want the investment portfolio to contain anything related to the auto industry," as an example. "We have what are called asset-backed securities that are related to auto loans." And that, if you look at page two of attachment one, that's currently 2.9% of our portfolio are in asset-backed securities. Not all are in auto loans, but, you know, a majority are. And that would, if council were to give that direction, that would eliminate that opportunity and that diversification opportunity for our portfolio. Carlos can speak more to kind of the yield pickup that we would forego if that were the direction from council, but that's kind of the principal question that was provided to staff, and that was just giving one example. So, again, looking forward to questions from council.
Any questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Hedges?
So, being the newest to arrive here, I'm wondering how this came before us. Was this something that was investigated by the earlier councilmembers?
That's correct. So there were, as a part of the Blue Sky Session, there were, I believe, two councilmembers that had expressed this interest in looking at the impact of ESG on an investment portfolio, and the majority of council agreed, hence it appeared on our priorities for this year.
So did they have goals?
No, it was more just looking at the impact for the current fiscal year.
I can speak to that. I was here. So, we had a number of members from the CR Club request this specific item as a policy goal, which I carried in the policy objectives, Blue Sky Session, and a majority of council agreed that it was worth studying. At the time, I don't think that anyone in the community or ourselves understood the difference between SRI and ESG. So this is, you know, new and very helpful information in terms of implementation, and any constraints in implementation. I think the primary objective coming from the community, and specifically the CR Club members, was looking at ways to create some guardrails against investments in fossil fuels specifically. And so, you know, if I can speak to and represent, I think, the interests of the community at the time, and unfortunately, they're not here today, but I think that that was the primary concern coming from the community. And so, my question, well, let me stop there. That's some of the background.
I had a couple of other things. So, and I understand, actually, I did own petroleum stock, and I got rid of it, not just for social reasons. It's so volatile, that it might be $100 a share when oil is up, and down as low as, with ConocoPhillips as low as 30. And so if it's at the low end, when you need the money, then you're in trouble. So, I just think it's riskier, especially for a public entity that may need the money at some point, to have fossil fuels. And as far as coal goes, that's going away. So, I don't think there's any long-term, so I would have no problem at all saying we should not invest in fossil fuels.
Question?
No, that's it.
Oh, I do have a question.
So, since I respect you so much, curious as to whether you would agree with my view of fossil fuel?
Let me qualify that by saying, we did look at the holdings of the city's investment portfolio, in the event that the council, by consensus, expressed interest to exclude any fossil fuels. So, I was looking at issuers that, at whose principal operations deal in fossil fuels. We have no holdings in the city's investment portfolio that has any issuer that has principal operations involving fossil fuels at present. But if the council wanted to, yes.
May I add to that also? And I want to make sure that we're talking about the same thing, and I also want to qualify my statement. As your investment advisor, we are agnostic which direction you want to go. You, as the policymakers, you give us the directions, and we carry it out. And we'll always work that way, working with you to make sure that we're following the law. So please don't take this as an, I'm trying to advocate for or against, but I do want to just make sure, what we're talking about are debt securities and not stocks. You're not allowed to own stocks. And the debt securities of the two fossil fuel issuers that I could think of right now that would be eligible for your portfolio, which you do not hold, as your Finance Director correctly stated, are Exxon and Chevron, and both those names are AA-rated, which is extremely safe rating. So just keep that in mind. I would agree with you that we would want to avoid any undue volatility in the portfolio, but those two names you would be avoiding because you have, you're making a stand. You're, as a policymaker, you've made a decision, you want to, you believe that there is a position in the community that you want to make sure is manifested in the investment portfolio, and it wouldn't, in the case of these two names, it wouldn't be because of volatility. This is a safety and liquidity portfolio, and we're, as your investment manager, we really view ourselves as risk managers above all, because this is safety and liquidity. It's public money, and we have to be very careful with it.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Councilmember Lorraine.
Thank you, Carlos. Could I get your help in explaining a little bit more about debt securities versus stock? Because I think I, you know, I saw a number of company names in the list of the portfolio attachment beyond the auto companies, right? Like Honeywell, for example, and some others. So are, is the city currently investing in debt securities related to these companies? And how, maybe, I apologize if you already explained that, but can you maybe, perhaps again, explain the difference between that and owning stock in that company?
Absolutely, council member. So a stock, when you're purchasing a stock security, it's also known as an equity, you are buying ownership in a company. So a company usually has cash needs, and they need to raise cash, so they go to the capital markets to raise cash. One of the ways they do that is they sell shares of their company to investors in the form of stock. So as an owner, you take the risks of an owner. That means if the company goes under, you lose your investment. Or if it takes off financially, you reap the rewards. And as an owner, you, there's a substantial risk associated with that. That's a stock. And that's, you have the stock markets, you have indices that follow just groupings of different stocks, like the Standard and Poor's 500 or the Dow Jones, and where you can kind of see what different types of stocks, how they perform, and what their risk profile is. With a bond, a bond is also known as a fixed income investment because you're buying the rights to an income stream. The company, rather than, they need cash, they're either going to raise it by selling a piece of themselves, or they're going to go to the capital markets by borrowing that money. So they do that in the form of a bond. So the instrument is simply an agreement. It's a contract where they go to the investor like you, and they say, if you lend me, for example, $1 million for three years, I will pay you 5% per year on those $1 million. And at the end of the three years, I will make my last debt service to you, and I will pay you back your $1 million. So they borrow the money and they give it back to you. And that's a contract. It's a contract that's enforceable in a court of law. So the risk parameters now dramatically change because you're not an owner in the company, but rather, you're lending money, and you have an expectation that you're going to get your money back. We look for ways to mitigate the risk of not getting that money back, and that's by buying very liquid investments that are widely held and have strong secondary markets, or they're very, very high in credit quality where their financials demonstrate to us that indeed they have the ability to pay you back and then some in various multiples. Or we look to diversify a portfolio so that we're not exposed to one type of issuer. We diversify maturities so that we've got money coming due and returning back to the city's portfolio at various times. There's various things that we do to diversify everything to manage that risk over the long run. But at the end of the day, you, so you saw, you mentioned Honeywell. You do not own a piece of Honeywell. You're lending money to Honeywell, and Honeywell is contractually bound to pay you back. And that's the difference.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Finance Director Lee. Or Carlos, or both. Surely, San Mateo is not the first city in California to pursue something like this. So I guess I'm just wondering if you have ideas on, for example, I think even the state is looking into possible considerations for PERS and other pensions and whatnot. I think I'm curious if you have some thoughts on what other cities in the county or state are doing and what, you know, whether we have some more local examples that might help broaden this discussion.
Thank you, councilmember Lorraine, for the question. In anticipation of your question, I contacted my colleagues throughout the county. And for those that were able to provide a response, East Palo Alto, South San Francisco, Town of Woodside, City of Foster City, all do not have either ESG or SRI incorporated into their investment portfolio or investment policy. Outside of the local area, but within the state of California, City of Pasadena does have ESG provisions in its portfolio. Just the name of a few of the factors for environmental, the carbon footprint, energy consumption, water and waste for social, labor rights, employee diversity, corporate social responsibility, for governance, leadership structure, executive compensation, and human capital management. The East Bay Regional Park District, they also use ESG. There is a little bit simpler. They partner with a third party, as Carlos mentioned, and they simply ask for their, they call it their ESG risk rating. You mentioned a scorecard. And so their scorecard has to be less than 30 in order for them to qualify to be included in the investment portfolio. If you were to conduct a survey of all of the local government entities in the state of California, you'd see many of them partnering with Chandler Asset Management, like the city does. Carlos will have a greater degree of experience and exposure that he can speak to outside of San Mateo County, but also within.
So to follow up on that vein, the investors, the cities and counties and joint powers authorities and special districts that we work with, and we're working with about 129, 130 of them, the vast majority have no socially responsible requirements or ESG, the vast majority. There will be a handful who will take an SRI approach. For example, City of Sunnyvale basically said, you know, we don't want to buy fossil fuels. And that's the only requirement that they have. And that's an easy requirement to help them with. Let's see. You have, you have maybe a handful. San Leandro is another one that's, a little bit more than just the fossil fuels, but it's in a similar manner. They just exclude investments that don't fit their mission. You have some two outlier examples in Northern California. City of, last I remember, city, and we don't work with the city, but the city of Berkeley and also the city of Oakland. I believe some parts of their cities are nuclear-free zones. They do not buy manufacturers of nuclear weapons. That would mean they don't buy United States treasuries. So these are debt securities from the United States government, which generally are considered the safest investment on the planet and a keystone in your investment program to manage liquidity and risk and safety. So that, those are outliers. And it's interesting because they both allow debt securities from the federal agencies of the United States government, like Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac. But those are generally considered to have some sort of backing from, or implied backing from the federal government that they avoid. So those are two outlier examples. The vast majority don't have any limits. If they do, it's typically an exclusionary and around, around some one or two themes, maybe three at the most. I do know City of San Luis Obispo is, in my experience, I've observed that they do, they hire Sustainalytics to help them with that. It's very important to them, but they, they don't look like the city of San Mateo. They have different values than you do. And then, of course, there's East Bay Regional, who I have worked with in the past, and others. Those are rare, the cities that team up with a third party like that to do an ESG rating. That's a rare thing. And I think it is, my opinion is, because it's primarily, it's still a very difficult area to define on an even level across the board. It's difficult to say that this rating is equivalent to this rating because the key performance indicators will really vary.
One last thing I wanted to add is, I believe, if the council were to coalesce around SRI, that's a simple direction that we can provide to staff, but also to our investment advisors. If we coalesce around ESG, likely, we would need to partner with a third party, and that comes at a cost. As an example, the East Bay Regional Park District, they pay their provider one basis point, so 0.1% of their portfolio value to provide that service.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Any other questions? No?
I have some questions.
Okay, councilmember, oh, Deputy Mayor Nash.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And thank you very much for the presentation. Two questions. Number one, I read in the materials that our Investment Advisory Committee last July recommended against any investment in SRI or ESG. Who was on that investment committee?
Thank you for the question. That's correct. So, oh, yes. So there is the, we did have a majority of the Investment Advisory Committee in attendance at that meeting, and it was unanimous amongst those that were in attendance. We had the chair, committee member Carney, and committee member Adams, all unanimously recommending that we not incorporate any SRI or ESG. And the primary focus was on the fiduciary duty to, in order, safety, liquidity, and yield. That's really the focus.
So this was a group of outside financial professionals?
So the Investment Advisory Committee, they are residents of San Mateo. This is a city manager-appointed committee. It's not appointed by council. But these are residents of the city that we meet with on a quarterly basis. We, along with Carlos and his team, provide a market update, as well as review the city's investment portfolio on a quarterly basis, and answer questions, and have a dialogue about the economic trends that are happening every quarter.
Okay, thank you very much. And then, excuse me, my next question, speaking only about SRI, taking ESG off the table completely, are there any examples of cities either in the region in California, or even more broadly outside of California that you are aware of, that exclude fossil fuels, guns, and tobacco specifically from portfolio? And if so, any knowledge about impact on performance? Or what can you offer in that regard?
Absolutely. I can, I can answer that question, vice mayor, I think it is. There are cities in the state of California that exclude those specific areas that you stated. I'll state them again. They are fossil fuels, weapons, I think you said, and tobacco. Those are not uncommon in amongst those cities that do it or local governments that do it. For example, City of Sunnyvale is one of those. City of San Leandro is another. Mendocino County is another county that does that. I'm just thinking of who else. Merced first season contemplated it, but they decided against it. West Sacramento is contemplating those three very areas. Your second question was, how would it impact the city? Because weapons manufacturers generally are not investment-grade issuers with strong, robust secondary markets that we look for to mitigate that risk, we, you're not going to be finding issuers whose primary revenue source is the manufacturer and sale of weapons. That's harder to find. If you were to look at fossil fuels, the two names that I thought that I think that we would end up excluding are AA credits, Exxon and Chevron. We would be able to find replacements for that. It wouldn't be an impact over the long run. It would, it would just be a little bit of a, you're just, every time that we exclude anything, we're just diminishing our ability to diversify. But to your point, the financial impact would not be large. And then the third one, I believe you said, was guns, fossil fuels, and tobacco.
Tobacco.
Yes. There are no tobacco issuers that I'm aware of that are investment-grade that would be eligible for investment in your portfolio at this time.
So then, I'm to understand that if we were to consider excluding those three areas from an SRI perspective, we currently are not invested in them from a principal operation perspective. And you are relatively comfortable that we either would not be invested in the future or could find alternatives that would not have a substantive impact on financial return?
Yes and yes, vice mayor. That's correct. That's fair to say. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Now we can turn to public comment. Are there any members of the public who would wish to give comment?
We have one hand in Zoom, and we have one hand in Zoom.
Wonderful.
We'll set the timer at three minutes. Jaclyn, go ahead.
Yes, hello. This is Michael, actually, on Jaclyn's computer. A few comments on this. Number one, I find it very frightening that there's a member of the city council, Mr. Lorraine, who is overseeing and involved in managing the city's investments or setting policy that does not understand anything as basic as the difference between a stock and a bond. And I would hope that the council would educate all of you on that so that you can better manage our own finances. Number two, Carlos, I'm afraid I missed his last name, stated that he is agnostic on this kinds of decisions. And I would encourage the council to not make him agnostic. He obviously is a professional and knows what he's doing, and he should be consulted for his opinion. Thirdly, this money is taxpayer money. And if people want to make a statement about ESG or SRI funds, they can, for those people in San Mateo, including the city employees, who will, I'm sure, have a retirement fund, and the school employees, and other people in San Mateo who are fortunate enough to have their own portfolios, that is where they can make their statement as to how they want to invest their money. But the council's goal should be to get the maximum return for the taxpayers under, under whatever limitations, which I understand are Class A bonds, and do that. And that is what, that is what should be done. And that is what is owed to the people. And if that includes fossil fuel companies, well, then, so be it. And you can take your own funds and the retirement funds from city and school employees and invest them where they would like, or lobby their employees, I mean, their employers to invest in those funds. Thank you.
Thank you. And confirming, there is no other request for public comment.
Thank you. And with that, we'll close public comment and open it up to council direction. Who would like to start? Councilmember Hedges.
I don't have a problem with the SRI approach. I don't have a problem with trying it on one issue. I probably would land on fossil fuels, but I want to hear what our other council members think. I haven't made a full decision yet.
Anyone else? Councilmember Lorraine.
Thank you. I agree. I think that there is some value in pursuing a limited exclusionary policy that aligns with the values of the city of San Mateo, particularly as they pertain to an interest in being a leader in environmental sustainability. And so, given that this came from educated members of our community and a number of council members aligned on exploring it, and it sounds to me that a number of council members are interested in pursuing something to this end, I am in support of that.
I think I would be in support of an SRI policy and would like to see how that unfolds. You know, Rich was suggesting we start with maybe one. However, from what I'm hearing, if we did go with weapons, tobacco, and fossil fuels, only fossil fuels would be applicable anyways. Is that right? So whether we say it's one or three, it's pretty much the same, I would say. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Nash?
Thank you very much. I agree with Councilmember Newsom that, and that's why I asked the question, because we absolutely have to take our fiduciary responsibilities extremely seriously on the council. But given that there is currently no investment and the horizon would be very little chance of investment in guns and tobacco, and that there are very possible, we, alternatives in the fossil fuels arena, I think there's an opportunity for us to demonstrate our values while also very much being responsible for our fiduciary responsibility. So I would be in favor of a, an SRI policy that excludes fossil fuels, guns, and tobacco.
So I would be in favor of a, an SRI policy that excludes fossil fuels, guns, and tobacco. But I think it also would be good to have a specific time period on it, and for our investment advisors to return to us and give us an evaluation, as well as an update on what's going on outside of our region, so that we do stay up to date. Thank you.
I'm very happy to hear that there's unanimous support for moving forward with a divestment in fossil fuels, or at least a commitment to stay out of fossil fuels. I don't think that the city should be in business with fossil fuel companies, and San Mateo has consistently been a leader in sustainability, and I think this is one of the ways that we can do that, and also, also continue our role as fiduciary custodians. So I believe that there is strong alignment here with our values, and also the path forward.
Councilmember Hedges.
I think that with our strong emphasis on reach codes, I think the other part of that would be eliminating the opportunity to invest in fossil fuels. So I'm ready to make a motion.
Please do.
I move that we...
If I can interject, so this is a study session, so there's no action by the council.
We have consensus.
Yeah, I mean, I think what you're looking for is just feedback, general direction, and then at a future council meeting, based on the direction staff can bring back, an amended investment policy for the council to actually take action on.
And regarding the, you know, what Deputy Mayor Nash had mentioned in terms of an evaluation period, I'm curious to hear from Finance Director Rich Lee, how that could possibly be implemented. I mean, we get routine updates.
We do have routine updates with our Investment Advisory Committee on a quarterly basis. I think I could convince our investment advisor to come back, at least on an annual basis, to the council, provide an update on the direction that it received, and any potential impact it may have had, and as well as providing an economic update as well.
Yes, we'll come back to whatever you need us to come back to, and bring you up to date on it, absolutely.
Well, thank you so much for all of your efforts, and for the education to us. This was a very thorough presentation, and we're very grateful.
And through the mayor, if I may, just to make sure that, you know, that in addition to fossil fuels, that guns and tobacco are on the list, even though we probably would not on our own invest in it, I think it's important to at least have that under consideration. Thank you.
Okay, I mean, help me, help me understand what the value is of adding those if they're not available and don't seem to be available on the market. So is that something that we would, is that, how does that work? Carlos?
Absolutely. So, so if you're placing it as a value in your investment policy, if there were such a time in the future when you had a tobacco, a tobacco manufacturer who all of a sudden has very strong financials and credit quality, that, and the type of liquidity and availability that we look for, that makes them attractive to purchase, that statement in your policy would exclude them. That's how it would function.
Okay, I mean, I don't think there's any harm in considering them in the policy. I think that Councilmember Hedges' approach to start with one and see how we do is also another path forward.
I think it's sort of a hollow gesture if they're not available, that would be my opinion. That's why I thought we would start with one, the one that we could have an effect on.
Do we have a majority in agreement to start with one?
I don't think it makes, you know, it is kind of hollow, you're right. I mean, if there aren't anything available, but on the flip side, by saying it, we're putting it out there that we, we stand against weapons, tobacco, and fossil fuels. So, you know, from a, like, putting it out there in the sphere, I think there makes, you know, there's no harm or foul, I would say. So I, I'm pretty, like, I think, go for it, why not? Like, it's not going to happen anyways, so, but, yeah.
I think I agree with Councilmember Newsom.
There we go. Do you have a direction?
Yes, thank you for the direction. We'll come back to council with a draft investment policy with the, those direct, that direction incorporated.
Thank you so much. And with that, we will adjourn until 7 o'clock, and we'll pick it back up.